Okay, it looks like we're holding pretty steady here. So I'm gonna start with introductions. Again, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I'm Julie Tamaro. I'm with the Washington State Department of Health. And then also facilitating this public hearing today is Michelle Weatherly, Corey Tarzwell, and Christina Buckley. And this meeting is being recorded. And before I go too much further, I wanted to do a sound check. And we're gonna do this by asking those of you on the call, if you can locate your raise hand button on your dashboard and just raise your hand, letting me know that you can hear us. That would be fantastic. Okay, I am seeing hands. Thank you, everybody. So also on your dashboard, you should be able to locate some handouts for today's meeting. And included in those handouts would be presentation slides and PDF document of the public hearing expectations and ground rules. And before we officially begin the public hearing portion of the webinar that will be facilitated by Department of Health, we have asked the proposed agency to provide more information about their program. So in just a moment, we'll turn it over to Nicole and Dan from the proposed agency to provide that overview. We are anticipating a really robust public comment period today, so we will not be able to field questions during the webinar. But if you have questions about their program or the information that they go over, there will be contact information shared at the end of the presentation, and you can reach out to them directly. So Michelle, I will ask you to please hand over the controls to Dan and Nicole. Thanks.
There we go, Dan. I've handed over the controls to you so that you can share your screen.
All right. Can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So to introduce myself, my name's Dan Hymus. I am the Regional Vice President of Acadia Healthcare's Comprehensive Treatment Centers Division. And I'm also a resident of Washington. We appreciate the opportunity that we have to share a little bit more information about our program today. So wanted to start off by showing a brief video that explains the services, who we are and then the services we offer. So let me start there.
Dan, I'm not able to hear the audio on this video for some reason.
Interesting. Let's try this again. Opioid use disorder. You close your eyes and picture someone with opioid use disorder. Who do you see? The reality is that it is that person, who could also look like your neighbor, a coworker, or even your teenager. Through our over 145 CTC facilities across the country, we provide life-sustaining care to tens of thousands of patients each and every day. When a patient comes into a CTC, enrollment coordinator guides them through the intake process. Then they have a consultation with an addiction specialist who works with them to develop a highly personalized treatment plan. This customized plan is executed by a team of addiction medicine-trained physicians, nurse practitioners, physician assistants, nurses, and counselors. Patients often express what treatment has meant for them. The letter we received recently stuck with me.
I've been a heroin addict since I was 16 years old. Since then, I've been to jail too many times to count, lost custody of my son, and betrayed the trust of my family and friends. Making the decision to walk through the doors that day saved my life. It's now four years later, and I am a completely different person than I used to be. I owe my life and recovery to this program.
Knowing the difference we can make is incredible. But we know that only 10% of people with opioid addiction are getting the help today. We're working to reach the other 90% by adding more facilities and improving access for patients who can't easily make it over to a clinic. Our number one focus is ensuring that patients are successful in their journey towards recovery. Okay, so as the video said, Acadia's Comprehensive Treatment Centers Network, we have over 145 clinics nationwide, serving more than 60,000 patients in 32 states. That makes us the largest medication-assisted treatment provider in the nation. We have eight CTC locations or Comprehensive Treatment Center locations in Washington. And the reason we're meeting today is because we are relocating our treatment facility that's currently located in Bothell to Linwood on 196th Street. One of the things that's unique about our program is we have early morning hours so that our patients can receive services. It's a time that's convenient for them so that it all enhanced and not interfere with their lives. So here's a quote that kind of explains why we do what we do. So Dr. McCants Katz, who is Assistant Secretary for Mental Health and Substance Abuse with SAMSA, basically she said that medication-assisted treatment is the gold standard for treating opioid addiction. And that's exactly what we do, is we use medication combined with the counseling group and individual counseling to help patients in their recovery. So some of the key metrics we use, 80% of our patients test negative for illicit opioids after six months in the program. Also mortality rate. So a patient who is engaged in medication-assisted treatment services is eight times less likely to experience an overdose death as opposed to if they were not involved in treatment. And lastly, if our, after patients in our program, approximately six months, 49% of them increase in their employment status. So it's really about trying to figure out how to help the patients and help them get back to leading productive lives. So then comes the question, why this area? So the need for services, 18% of the heroin-related deaths in Washington come from St. Olmish County. 198 opioid-related deaths happened in St. Olmish County in 2021. And we have over 100 CTC patients that live within five miles of the proposed location. And they live, work, and are an active part of the community. So that's why we've chosen that area. Our goal is to help them get back to leading productive lives. So we're proud to be a part of the Linwood community and continue to provide life-changing and life-saving services to members of the community. We're happy to be a part of the community, and we're thankful to everybody for the support that they've given us so far and for the continued support they will give us in operating in this community. So that's a little bit about us. So Michelle, I'll turn it back to you guys.
All right, thanks, Dan.
All right. Thanks, Dan. And then, Michelle, would you be able to provide contact information and send it out to the attendees?
Yes, I can do that. And then also, there's contact information that I've also put in the chat on the dashboard. You can see there that there's contact information for the proposed opioid treatment program, and I will show it on a slide again. But I'll be happy to send that out to the group of registered people who are registered for this meeting today.
That sounds great. Thank you. So with that, we will begin the official public hearing facilitated by Department of Health. Again, this meeting is being recorded. And for the record, this meeting is officially started as of 4:40 PM. And the purpose of this hearing is to obtain public comment specifically for the proposed Linwood Comprehensive Treatment Center, which is an opioid treatment program proposed to be located at 2322 196 Southwest Street in Linwood. This is an existing agency that is changing locations. They were previously named Canyon Park Treatment Solutions and were located in Bothell and have applied to move the agency about five miles to the new proposed location in Linwood. So the Revised Code of Washington, which is Washington state law, requires the Department of Health to hold one public hearing for the community in which the program is proposed to be located when making a decision on an application for opioid treatment program licensing and certification. So public comments are used in a few different ways. The department is required to license proposed agencies that meet the licensing requirements set forth in the state regulations. So the department is listening for public comments that may indicate that the proposed agency does not meet minimum licensing standards. Additionally, public comments are used to identify concerns with a proposed agency or the services the agency will provide so that the agency can develop a plan to address and mitigate those concerns. So in the interest of time, because like I said, this is going to be a robust public hearing as well as adhering to the purpose of the public hearing, which is to listen to the comments from the public. The department doesn't respond to questions during the public hearing. The department and the proposed agency will respond to questions and concerns within two weeks following the hearing and post the responses publicly on the Department of Health website, which Michelle will provide that information as well. So before we start taking comments, I'm gonna turn this over to Michelle so that she can briefly explain the licensing and certification process for opioid treatment programs and then also provide some instructions for how the public comment period will be organized.
Thank you, Julie. I appreciate that. And again, in the chat on the dashboard, there is a link to the webpage where we will be posting the responses to those comments. So you can look for those to be there within the next two weeks. All right. And so with that, I will go ahead and just jump right in and begin with a quick overview of what an OTP is and then go through the licensing and certification process. So an opioid treatment program engages in the treatment of opioid use disorder with medications approved by the United States Food and Drug Administration for the treatment of opioid use disorder and reversal of opioid overdose. The FDA-approved medications include methadone, buprenorphine, and naltrexone. I do want to note here that there are clinics that can provide medication-assisted treatment called office-based opioid treatment clinics or what we refer to as OBOTS. And there are some differences from an OTP. OTPs can order, possess, dispense, and administer all three of the FDA-approved medications that you see on the slide. For OTPs, the patient does not need to go to an outside pharmacy to get their medication. OTPs provide approved medications in combination with counseling and behavioral therapies. OBOTS, on the other hand, can only prescribe buprenorphine and naltrexone for the treatment of opioid use disorder, not methadone. Patients in these clinics would need to go to a pharmacy to fill their prescription because these clinics do not possess, dispense, or administer these medications to the patients. The other difference is that OTPs are licensed by the department. OBOT clinics are not, since they're considered private facilities. For these clinics, the healthcare provider is credentialed and licensed by the department. I also want to note that the department does not own, operate, or provide funding to opioid treatment programs. Proposed agencies pay a licensing fee to cover the cost of licensing and regulating the agency. The department received an application and community relations plan in October from Linwood Comprehensive Treatment Center to obtain certification to operate an opioid treatment program. Please note that this is a change-of-location application moving from Bothell to Linwood. The proposed site location is at 2322 196 Southwest Street, Linwood, Washington, 9036. And then OTPs are regulated by a few different agencies, which include the Department of Health, the Washington State Pharmacy Quality Assurance Commission, the Federal Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, or what we refer to as SAMSA, a federally-recognized accreditation body, and the Federal Drug Enforcement Administration, or DEA. And then there are some regulatory requirements. The laws, rules, and procedures for the certification process of OTPs includes 42 Code of Federal Regulations, CFR, Part 8. These are the federal regulations related specifically to medication-assisted treatment for opioid use disorder. Chapter 7124 Revised Code of Washington, or RCW. This is the Washington state law related to the program licensing or certification and the use of medications by program. And Chapter 246341, Washington Administrative Code, or WAC. These are the Washington state rules related to the standards for behavioral health agency licensing and certification requirements. And then SAMSA's Federal Guidelines for Opioid Treatment Programs. These describe the federal expectations of how standards in 42 CFR Part 8 are to be satisfied. Next, we'll touch on the certification steps for the proposed program. So proposed OTPs must submit to the department a completed licensing and certification application, including a fee, a comprehensive community relations plan, which includes working in collaboration with the county and city legislative authorities regarding notification and education to the community stakeholders and the general public regarding the proposed location of the program and a plan to address any identified concerns, policies and procedures demonstrating compliance with rules and regulations for review and approval. And then proposed OTPs must obtain a registration from the Washington State Pharmacy Quality Assurance Commission, certification from SAMSA, accreditation from a federally-recognized accreditation body, and then a registration from the Federal Drug Enforcement Administration. And now we'll go over the steps that the department must take when considering the licensing and certification application for an OTP. So the department must certify only programs that will be cited in accordance with the appropriate county or city land use ordinance. Counties and cities may require conditional or special use permits with reasonable conditions for the citing of programs. However, please note that pursuant to RCW 3670A200, no local comprehensive plan or development regulation may preclude the citing of an essential public facility. They almost, we also must consider the size of the population in need of treatment in the area in which the program would be located and certify only applicants whose programs meet the necessary treatment needs of that population. Consider the availability of other certified programs near the area in which the applicant proposes to locate the program. Consider the transportation systems that would provide services to the program and whether the system will provide reasonable opportunities to access the program for persons in need of treatment. Consider whether the applicant has or has demonstrated in the past the capability to provide the appropriate services to assist the persons who utilize the program in meeting the goals established by the legislature in RCW 7124585. The department shall prioritize certification to applicants who have demonstrated such capability and are able to measure their success in meeting such outcomes. And then we must hold one public hearing for the community in which the facility is proposed to be located. Additionally, all public comments received in writing and during the public hearing will be shared with the proposed OTP. As Julie mentioned, the proposed OTP will respond to any concerns by submitting to the department an updated community relations plan. Then finally, I wanted to offer some contact information, which we also have in the chat box as well. The OTP comments at doh.wa.gov. You can reach out to us here at the department if you have comments that you would like to share in regard to this proposed program. And then I'm also providing contact information for Nicole Smith Matthews with the Linwood Comprehensive Treatment Center. She is the Regional Director of Washington for Acadia Healthcare Comprehensive Treatment Center Division. Her number is 3603567775. That's 3603567775. And you can also reach her at her email address, which is nicole-smith-mathews@ctcprograms.com. And I've also listed this information in the chat box as well. And it's also located, these slides are located not only in the dashboard here, but they're also located at the link that's in the dashboard on our website. So you can look for that information there as well. So with that, I'm gonna pull up another document that will help provide some instruction during the comment period. Let me change my screen view here. There we go. That slideshow, okay. Oh, let's see here. Here we go. Here we go. All right. Thank you for your patience with that. Okay, so with that, I'd like to say a few things about today's hearing and process for providing public comment. So I've pulled up the instructions on how to raise your hand and where you can type in comments. So in the full taskbar, if the full taskbar is not visible to you, you can click on the red arrow to expand the taskbar. And then once the taskbar is expanded, you'll be able to see a gray bar with the questions title. To expand the questions box, click on the white arrow, and that'll pop a box out that will make it a little bit bigger for you. So as Julie mentioned, we do have quite a few people who indicated on their registration that they would like to, they would like to comment. So if you'd rather provide a written comment, you may email your comment to otpcomments@doh.wa.gov, or you can type it in the questions box. I do want to say that we're extending the written public comment period until close of business on Friday to give folks a little extra time to provide those comments to us. If you would like to provide verbal public comment, please raise your hand. You may also need to unmute yourself. We'll call your name in the order hands are raised and unmute your line. If we mispronounce your name, we apologize, and please correct us. If another person comments the same thing that you are going to comment, you may type "agree" in the questions box, and we will log that as your comment. If for some reason there are technical difficulties with commenting during the meeting, you can email your comment to otpcomments@doh.wa.gov. The email address, again, is in the chat box, and we'll be accepting those written comments until close of business tomorrow, Friday, December 30. So like I said, we've provided some instructions on the screen on how to raise your hand or provide that written comment. And again, this meeting is being recorded. If you don't want to be recorded, then we recommend that you provide written comments using the question box on your dashboard or the email address provided. Please note that all comments, including those that are typed in the question box, are subject to public disclosure requests. Each person who has indicated they would like to speak will have the opportunity to do so. Each person who speaks will be given three minutes to talk. If you have a comment that takes longer than three minutes, you may submit the remainder of your comment in the questions box. A timer will be used, and we will let you know when your time is up. Please respect these time limits. And Corey will be calling the names of those who indicated that they wish to speak. And to help expedite things when your name is called and your line is unmuted, please state your name and who you represent or are affiliated with, and then provide your comment. Please limit your comments to the content of the proposed opioid treatment program. The department will not be responding, as Julie mentioned, to questions during the public comment period. And finally, I also ask that folks, please be respectful. So at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Corey, and we will begin taking comments.
Michelle, can I jump into? This is Julie.
Yeah.
Yep, I just wanted to say, we do see there's some questions that have been put into the questions box. If it is a specific question, then we will include that in the questions that we respond to within the next two weeks. If it is a statement, then once we're done with the verbal comments and assuming, you know, it's not like 10 o'clock at night, we will go ahead and read those aloud if it's more than just a question.
Okay, thank you, Julie. So I'm just gonna go through the hands. They're in alphabetical order. So starting at the top, we have Catherine Brand. Catherine, if you're speaking, we're not able to hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. I don't have anything to say. I just have my hand up by accident. So sorry. I just never was able to put it down. So I'm done.
No problem. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Next up, we have George Hurst. Oops, sorry about that, George. Try again.
Okay, we there?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay. Hi, I'm George Hurst, and I'm here as a member of the Linwood City Council to talk about the rushed and non-transparent process regarding the proposed opioid treatment program to be located at 2322 196th Street, Southwest, in Linwood. My objections today are on the process of approving this site. I want to be able to have services available in Linwood to battle drug addiction. I just have had no information provided to the city council to help justify this OTP program in Linwood. The city council was notified about this proposed OTP at 11:00 AM on December 12th via an email from Michelle Weatherly of the State Health Department. The council meeting that night was the final meeting for the council in 2022, and the agenda was full. The email from the State Department of Health included a letter regarding the application for the opioid treatment program in Linwood. And that letter stated that a public hearing for this program would be held on August 16th, 2022, at 4:30 PM. Due to my focus on the council meeting that evening, I saw the August date for a public hearing, and honestly, I set the letter aside and continued to concentrate on that night's council meeting. In a series of emails between myself and the Department of Health over the next seven days, the date of the public hearing was corrected to December 29th. And I was told on December 20th by Julie Tamaro from the Department of Health that, quote, "We spoke with the agency yesterday. Based on that conversation, it sounded as if they had not reached out to the city yet but are aware of the need to do so. They stated their intent to connect with the city as soon as possible." That was on December 20th. Yesterday, eight days later, and a day before this public hearing, I was contacted by Nicole Smith Matthews, Regional Director of Acadia Healthcare. I've invited her to the council meeting on January 3rd. I wish Acadia had contacted the city council much sooner so council could have had an opportunity to ask questions and talk about any concerns. Now, instead of having a meaningful dialogue about the Linwood OTP, I feel we are just part of a check-the-box process. The state will hold a public hearing, check. Acadia will meet with the council, check. A few stakeholders will be briefly contacted with a short visit or voicemail that is left, check, check. All happening after the tenant improvement for the OTP has been finished and is ready for occupancy at a site a few hundred feet from the Alderwood Boys and Girls Club. We would, why would a service provider like Acadia pay over $300,000 for this tenant improvement without a certainty that they can have an opioid treatment program, a methadone clinic located at this site in Linwood? This is the question that makes me believe the opinions and values of the city council and of the residents and stakeholders around this site are of no importance to the State Department of Health. The decision to locate at this site is a done deal. Acadia and the state has not provided the education justification needed for this site. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Next up, we have Ken Salem.
Thank you. We would echo some of George's sentiments about lack of transparency. We would have expected, as a property owner, BGSC would have expected to have been directly contacted to sit down and discuss how they operate, our concerns, also relate to clientele. We are a youth-serving agency and an important part of the community. So we clearly are very concerned about community safety. Operating hours, we operate many times of the year, all day long, early morning into the evening. Early morning into the evening. So we would see a direct conflict there. And we, our first and primary concern, whether we're, whether we're running a sports program, childcare program, whatever it is, is safety. And so this lack of transparency and lack of the ability to have a conversation with the agency to discuss these issues is first and foremost on our minds. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Next up, we have Lauren Davis.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment. My name is Lauren Davis. I represent Linwood and the surrounding area in the state legislature and I work professionally and have for the past decade in behavioral health and addiction services specifically. Want to thank specifically Department of Health for all the work. I know these meetings take a lot to organize. I'm actually incredibly excited about this program coming to our community and I'll tell you why. So for folks who may be a little bit less familiar, the treatment of opioid use disorder, as was described, the gold standard is one of three medications, but very often individuals end up in a situation where they're essentially, it's medication by geography. So just like the treatment of depression, which is typically treated with SSRIs, typically one SSRI, the first one you try might not work and a person's biochemistry determines in many ways their response and everybody's different. Now, for folks with opioid use disorder, very often they are ended up kind of relegated to buprenorphine or suboxone or naltrexone or vivitrol because they don't have access to methadone. But methadone for many individuals is actually the most appropriate treatment and the medication they're most likely to be successful on, the medication that's most likely to lead to full remission of their opioid use disorder and illicit drug use. This is especially true for fentanyl because fentanyl is so potent, many individuals are actually not doing as well on suboxone coming off of fentanyl, which is why it's so important and imperative that we have access to methadone in our community specifically. The way that methadone works essentially is that I describe it as getting the person off of the roller coaster. When a person is using illicit opioids, they essentially, they wake up every day and they are what we would call dope sick and their entire, you know, body and mind is really screaming at them. And they do lots of things, many of them illegal, to obtain money for drugs. You know, break into somebody's garage, steal their power tools, then pawn those power tools, then go to try to find their drug dealer, then try to find a vein to inject or and it's a really miserable existence. And when a person is on methadone, they, their opioid receptors in their brain are essentially satiated. And so that allows them to get off that roller coaster and all of a sudden, they're no longer dope sick, they're no longer breaking into somebody's garage, they're no longer pawning power tools, they're no longer searching for a vein and they can have structure and routine and be employed and parent and be members of our community. Methadone is an incredibly effective medication and it's an access issue because it's so heavily regulated by the DEA. So I'm really excited about having this in Linwood, particularly because of the proximity to both the forthcoming correctional facility and the Community Recovery Center, both of which will treat a very large number of individuals who have opioid use disorder and they will actually have access to methadone, which may for many of them be the best medication. Again, that will lead to that cessation of illicit drug use. So welcome to Linwood. You have my full support and I'd be happy to answer any questions from community members who may be a little bit less familiar. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Next up, we have, we will, we have Max Steve with his hand raised, but it appears that you don't have a microphone. So if you're able to respond, Max, can you speak up? I'm still showing that you're not connected to an audio system. So I'm going to move to the the next person, but I will circle back and check and see if you've been able to connect to audio before we finish. So next up, we have Chin Xin Bai. I'm so sorry if I'm mispronouncing that.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Actually, that was an amazing pronunciation. Thanks for that.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. So I'm Chin Xin Bai. You can call me David. I receive, I currently live in Nuttlick Terrace, Crixet Meadows. One of the newest communities additions to this Linwood, Nuttlick Terrace area. So I do have a few things to bring up and first of all, I appreciate you guys kind of taking, trying to taking care of the people from overdose users and from all sorts of disorders and trying to decrease the crack rates in the surrounding areas. I do appreciate that, but, but why, what makes you guys think it's a good idea to put it in the center of everything? Like it's 100, 100 feet or yards right next to the Boys and Girls Club? Would you feel you could send your kids to that daycare center had you known there are tons of peoples, you know, with all different sort of disorders and people who are trying to seek help, who are actually getting there? And if you, if your way to treat them is by giving them the correct doses, what makes the department think that they will not see for additional drugs? What makes you think that the other drug dealers in, you know, previously in Bothell or Shoreline areas, they would not move there? And according, as far as I know, that the outward more area is just recently, has recently been developed into a very well, very nice neighborhood with tons of things going on. And would you think that's kind of destroying the whole vibe there? And I talked to a couple of people and most of us do not know about this until a couple of weeks ago. And I got notified this from a website that my friend sent me and I tried to, you know, share this to more people, but I couldn't do so. And I could only tell people to search this news by themselves. And this, the link cannot be shared at all. And you guys are hosting this public hearing, this so-called public, but it is happening on December 29th. Most of us on vacation and it's 4:30 on a Thursday night. So the lack of transparency of the process makes me think that you are actually don't, don't actually want to hear from the public. And now, so this is all like a checkbox processes. This makes me kind of think not caring for people who live in this area. And so that's it. I guess my last question is, would you send your kids to the Boys and Girls Club right next to a drug center? If that's been established already? I would like to know that.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Yingri Guan. And I'm showing that you are currently self-muted, so you'll need to unmute yourself in the go-to panel. There you go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yes. So this is Ying, you can call me Ying. So basically, yeah, I totally agree with the non-transparent process. I only heard this through my friends and as same as David, I cannot share this at all. I have to grab screenshots and share with my friends. The other thing that I also come to my mind when I heard about this is whoever proposed this, would you be okay with this being in your neighborhood? Meaning the opioid treatment center, no matter which neighborhood this is established should be in. Would any of the proposed people be okay with this treatment center being established in your own neighborhood? No matter which neighborhood this is in, the treatment center is not safe for anybody. Just take San Francisco as example. It was such a lovely place to, to live in, but now San Francisco is totally a shithole and nobody feels safe to be in there, especially women and children. For certain areas, it's just like unpleasant or it's just unsafe. I would never visit certain areas of San Francisco because of opioid treatment center. So I don't think in general, however, we're solving the opioid problem, it's just not a good way to solve. Why not solve this problem from the beginning, from the root cause? Can we control the drug instead of giving everybody a safe place to use the drug? Can we just think of other ways that we can help people not to get used to the drug or have access to the drug? Is there a way a government can do more just to not do any of the treatment center and provide the funds to other places such as drug control, anything like that? And I think my last comment is also related to the child, where the location is chosen. First of all, how people thought about that being so near a Boys and Girls Center and especially there are two such healthcare center near the location that is chosen. And, and why is this hearing is held at this such place and also non-transparent process of the current hearing? And when I actually share with a lot of people, my friends, they're, they're for sure, like if the opioid treatment center is established there, they will never send their children there. So for, just for the community, I'm not sure that this is in general a good thing to do just for people because everybody have children and why would you feel safe to send your children there? So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next up, we have Vivian Dong.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey, so I'm a Linwood resident. I have lived here since 2015. I live really close to the proposed site. Actually, across the street from the Linwood Old Wood. Like the proposed site is about a couple hundred yards from my house. And we used to walk our kids to the Boys and Girls Club every summer, like almost every day. In the evening during the summertime, my parents used to walk around the neighborhood on the 196th, 197th. And we volunteered in the Boys and Girls Club for the baseball league and my kids, all three of them have played games almost every week in that site. And I just like to say that I'm really, really frustrated by this proposed project to move this site to this neighborhood. Like many have commented before, I just didn't understand why, who had this idea to think this is, would be the safe site for, you know, like for those people to come so close to kids, right? Like, and, and the Boys and Girls Club is not only weekend games for sports, they also have, I think, before and after school activities for all the advanced school kids. And I like to echo those who said, whoever raised this proposal and also the media organizers and also that lady that was so supportive of this, this project. Would you be able to feel safe to, to still continue your previous lifestyle, knowing that this site will be there? Like, will you vote for this? It's like 100 yards from your house, right? Like, I like to know, like you said, the answer really forced it. I like to know, like, how, how many of you will vote, yes, if it's in your community? And also I can know why they do want to move from Bothell to Linwood in the first place? Was there an increase in crime rates near the Bothell neighborhood when this site has forced you to do there? Like, what is the crime rate impact? How many of your patients have turned violent, right? How many of them have committed crime within a couple miles of this site, right? And, and how are you going to increase the security and then the police force in Linwood if you are going to move it here, right? Another issue is why do you think this is convenient for people to come here? The 196th, that grid only has one bus list, if I correct, right? Why don't we put it there somewhere near the bus center on the other side of I-5, right? So I'd like to know the answers of all my questions. Thank you. Yeah, I'm really, really frustrated and I don't, okay, thank you.
Thank you. It appears the last hand raised is Max Steve and Max, I'm still showing that you're not connected to audio. So I recommend that you go to the audio section of the go-to panel and you can switch to a phone line and just dial in. And we have had several other hands raised just in the last couple of seconds, so let's go to Avinash G. You appear to have unmuted yourself, but we're not hearing you. I'm still not able to hear you, but I can tell that you're dialing in, so I will come back around to you after the next person. So for now, let's go to Pam Hurst.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Okay, my name is Pam Hurst. I'm resident of Linwood and I'm a fair housing advocate and a member of Linwood's Human Services Commission. To begin with, just as I sit here and realize that half my questions have already been asked, I just feel very sad that so much of our frustration that I hear and the whys and the questions and the hows and just, it just seems like the state, if that's the program that started all this or is allowing this to come through or if it's the group itself, they just didn't seem to have any need to make time to educate our community to share their philosophy of the need and the benefits of such a program. I mean, I'm with Lauren Davis. Yes, we need a system. Yes, the people deserve chances. Yes, they need a lifestyle that's going to contribute back to our community. Yes, 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 but because of the lack of transparency, it hurts my head to think that the resistance is because the process. And you've already heard that. But I do have a particular question that I don't think's been addressed. I've had many discussions with a local mental health professional who worked out of Bothell. In the past, she personally worked with clients prescribed methadone and she had witnessed the severe negative effects her clients experienced when they mixed methadone with other substances, legal or not. It's my belief that if a person on methadone treatment combines use of methadone with other substances such as alcohol, serious reactions can occur. Combining methadone with another depressant or sedative can result in depressed breathing, unconsciousness, coma, or even death. Those kinds of questions are educated or just the philosophy given to me before tonight sure would have given me an opportunity to try to be your cheerleader and fit into this. But in the meantime, I just want to ask the blatant question, did Bothell ask you all to leave? And if yes, what were the reasons? Thanks.
Thank you. And it does look like Avinash is connected to audio, so let's go ahead and see if we can hear you.
Sure, thank you so much. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Firstly, thank you for the opportunity. And as many people have already echoed in their opinion, I would like to categorize this in three things. One is the transportation. The area that is selected doesn't seem to be helping us in any way to get these folks treated easily. The second category is there is a lot of new construction that is happening here. There's a lot of new families that have moved with young kids. I do not think it is safe. And thirdly, just thinking about the kids, I, I do not think this is a right, right location. And fourthly, with the transparency, yes, right, another gentleman, okay, opinion, this, there, this has been sent at the end of the year where most people are on vacation. Just the lack of transparency may questions the agenda of this program. Not being given enough time to register or, you know, even share this link makes it impossible to get more opinion on this. So considering all of these things, I would like to say it's, this is causing a lot of headache and a lot of frustration to the people in the nearby communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see here. Next, we have Ruth Cassidy.
Hi, I work at the Alderwood Boys and Girls Club and a couple of the concerns I have is currently we're having to drive vans to our own personal homes because of vandalism. And we have concerns with drug deals going down in our parking lot pretty regularly. We're chasing people out. We have people in our building from 6:30 in the morning until usually 9:30, 10 o'clock at night on the weekends as well. How are these issues being addressed? And as people have said, what was it like in Bothell? So those are just my concerns and my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Sandra Lane.
Hello?
Hi. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Good to hear you. Okay, uh, my name is Sandy and, um, I am passionate about this topic. Um, I lost my only child as a result of the, um, opiate epidemic. So this is very personal for me, but I, I'll tell you, I smell a rat. Um, I would like to be a cheerleader for this program, but the lack of transparency seems really shady and kind of cringe-worthy to me. Um, I think that we as a community have a strict responsibility to, uh, safety of the community and especially our youth. I mean, to be that close to a Boys and Girls Club, that is insanity on some level. And, um, I too am curious, what the heck happened in Bothell? Did they run you out? Is that what they did? And I also am concerned about the quality of care that's going to be delivered if this thing goes through. I mean, is this going to be a training ground for, um, apprentices and interns? Or is this, um, you know, what, what is the level of quality and integrity of, um, the workers going to be? Um, you know, as we know, with drug and alcohol treatment programs, some of them are pretty nasty and yucky and people you would not want to really have taking care of you. And some of them are very professional. So I have questions in that regard too. And believe you me, nobody more than me wants to see people get help for getting off of opiates. But I don't like what I'm hearing. I, and I, you know, I, I need, I need to, to speak my mind on that. If I could vote no, I would vote no. Integrity is important and there is, the lack of transparency is just kind of a deal breaker. The end.
Thank you. Um, and it does look like Max was able to get connected, so Max, um, you are welcome to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Um, so yeah, I, I'd like to go ahead and mention that, um, I do understand the, the, what the, the need of this, for this program. My main concern is with the placement, um, of this location. Uh, if you look at the, the parcel viewer, you would know that this is located at the very, very tip of the city of Linwood. So anything that spills out of that would essentially go into the unincorporated Snohomish County and would essentially become the problem of the sheriff. And any problems that would stem from, like anybody just walking down a block to the right, City of Linwood would just say, it's no longer our problem, contact the sheriff. And then the sheriff would have to dedicate their resources to address any issues that would stem from this location. I personally think that just given the location and the lack of transit access, I believe there are potential for better locations for such a center to be put. Um, for starters, I think, with the light rail, uh, it would be a better location for, especially for people who don't have access to vehicles to access such a center. But yeah, that's all I had to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Shannon Sessions. Shannon, you appear to be unmuted, but we're not hearing you.
Hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Very good, thank you so much. Uh, I'm Shannon Sessions and I'm one of the seven elected Linwood City Council members. And, you know, while I understand the need for a program like this and I do want to support help for those in addiction, just like so many people have said, it's, it's a bit mind-boggling how I just learned about this. Council went on break, um, on the 12th and, and we have, you know, constituents, community members, media reaching out to us just in the last couple days about what this is about. And, and so that's super concerning when we should be the people to know this and be educated on all the details about such a facility. Uh, why didn't that happen? That's, that's super concerning. Um, you know, I think that the location itself, if the Alderwood Boys and Girls Club wasn't right there, probably is a good place for it, but not with the Boys and Girls Club there. Um, I mean, that just doesn't make sense to me. Also, I wanted to clarify a couple people who have been speaking. Um, just to, to clarify that this is not a supervised injection facility. This is being sold to us here as a treatment program. So it's not the same thing. So for anybody thinking that possibly this is a supervised injection facility, that's not what it is. So just to be clear, um, even though I know that of course the opiate treatment programs have their own, um, concerns and risks and, and that those drugs used to help people in opioid addiction have their own risks and, and side effects that could be, um, also dangerous. I certainly think we can all agree it's not as dangerous as our opioid and fentanyl addiction, um, that's happening. And with the private work I do, I can tell you that this is happening around us every single day, several times a day and all week long, um, all over South Snohomish County. So I get the reason why this is a good location, I mean, Linwood in general, I mean. But this actual location near the Boys and Girls Club, that just, that just can't happen there. So that's what I'd like to say. Um, I am curious of why this was rushed. I'm, I'm curious as to why Linwood leadership wasn't, um, taken into more consideration on this. It just sounds like this has already been decided and, um, and, and we need to have more information so that we can also help, um, educate our community, um, about what this is and isn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Sylvia Fryer.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
It's, it's actually Michael Fryer, I must say Sylvia. Um, yeah, so actually I'm a, I'm a local bus driver for community transit. So I'm actually very familiar with the, uh, the population that needs this treatment. You know, they, they ride on my buses every day. Um, so I'm very much in support of this, this treatment facility being placed in this area. But just like many of the others have stated, this particular location seems questionable to me because of the Boys and Girls Club. And there's an elementary also just, just down the road as well. Um, so I know that many of, many of these, uh, these people congregate around Highway 99 Airport Road. So I'm wondering why that, you know, somewhere, you know, in that area wasn't decided. Um, and why we are going to place the facility, um, you know, closer to our children. Uh, you know, especially when we're dealing with people that have impulse control problems. It just doesn't make sense to me and it, it makes me nervous. I mean, I don't, won't want to send my kids out on the streets with, with these people roaming around. And I don't know what's going to happen with the encampments. Are they gonna, you know, start roaming around in the parks? And, yeah, it just, it really makes me nervous, so. Yeah, that's, that's the comments that I have.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Next up, we have Tejil Paten.
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, so my major concern is that, uh, first of all, a lot of us have spoken about transparency already. That's really bothering me because we did not formally get informed about this program at all. We just heard through some neighbors and got to know about this. So this is really sad that we were not even informed about this because we are residents and we will directly get impacted through this. Uh, the second one is, uh, a lot of us have like really young kids here. So how do we feel safe with all these things happening? Like, do we expect any kind of protection being given? Like, will the cops be helping us in case of any incidents? Uh, we don't know anything about that. Like recently, we had an encounter with something similar and the cops did not help us really enough for us to feel safe. And with an institution like this coming so close to us, we are really worried what is going to happen for our kids, for us, just in, in general for the safety of our community. Uh, I just wanted to voice this and if there is a way to work for this, I would definitely say no for the current location that has been proposed for this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Tara Damson.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. Um, so I was hoping to just, uh, iterate my comments and, and the same that everyone else has. And, um, I didn't want to just say yes in, in a text box. Um, what I, I'm concerned with the lack of transparency. I am exceedingly concerned with the location next to the Boys and Girls Club and the fact that, as someone else noted, this is literally across the street from Snohomish County. This isn't the center of Linwood. This isn't a business location where the most of the traffic happens within the city of Linwood. This is on the outskirts, across the street from Snohomish County, where if something were to happen on the other side of the road, we have no, you know, ramifications. And, and being a resident on that side, just across the street, um, it's exceedingly concerning that we're now relying on a separate jurisdiction for that protection. Um, I, as I sit here and listen, you know, I was, I was frustrated by the how we found out and wanted to make sure my comments were heard. But in listening to this and the fact that two city council members have spoken and have said that they have heard no information about this, that they were given no notification, they were given no discussion, that it sounds like a done deal and the state or whoever has made this decision without any public knowledge or, or input is absolutely terrifying. And I am not sure how to fix this problem with government if this is the way it was to operate. Um, because this is not a check and balance system. This is not how things should be happening. So, um, for the record, I just, I just wanted to make sure my comments were heard. The location is absolutely unheard of. The Boys and Girls Club is next door. The Alderwood Little League is in the parking, is actually part of the facilities or next door to the Linwood Boys and Girls Club. So that is used continually through spring and summer and late into the evenings and early mornings for games, um, in which kids are out and, and there's only one or, you know, a few parents for coaching. And, and what is that safety going to look like? I would, I would love to have in the comments back from this facility or whoever is moving forward. This is a clear safety plan, a clear designation for what the expectations are and how the Boys and Girls Club and those children will be protected. What the, um, discussions with local police have been. And, and a clear response as to why they're leaving Bothell and why they're not located in a central location of Linwood, where they can help more people rather than on the outskirts of the city closer to the Snohomish County. And if that's some way of getting out of some other process that they're just trying to circumvent. So again, thank you for your time and, and hearing my concerns.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have Tian Tan.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Hi, uh, this is Tian Tan. I'm actually from a, a new construction neighborhood, uh, near Linwood, which is like 10 minutes away from car traffic. So, um, I, first of all, I do appreciate the effort of supporting those addicted users, um, being able to help others, um, from overdose. Uh, however, as many people have addressed, uh, the concern, um, there is no guarantee for safety. There is no transparency in the location. Um, I'm just curious, you know, uh, what would happen? Because from what I heard of over this hour, most of people have basically raised their concerns and obviously, uh, vote, if they have choice to vote no, they would probably vote no. Like, what will happen after this hearing? Like, if you hear, most of us are speaking here, raise our concerns. Do our, um, is there any process that can help us understand what, what's going to happen next? And then another thing is that I also heard that the same treatment program was brought up to Chinatown, to Bellevue. Um, and I, I obviously didn't find any public information about it. There is no transparency of what, what's going on. Uh, there's no knowledge of how those locations are chosen. We don't even know how many, uh, opiate, uh, drug users are in Linwood. Uh, that, that makes, um, Linwood the most important place to, you know, have this, uh, site. Like, if there is more users in Seattle or in Bothell or in Bellevue, would you consider to build a site there? Uh, those are the information that we really don't have and you don't, you know, bother to tell us. So I, I'd really appreciate all the process that's following and all the information that can be shared with transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Tian Z.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Sure, uh, I just want to introduce another point. Uh, let's look at the map. Um, the Whole Foods Market is like only one block away from the proposed location. Um, I'm really wondering like if they would pick this location if the facility had been there? Because they market themselves like a high-end grocery and I don't really think they would pick that location. And also we're looking at other, um, stores next to that location. It's like we have North, North Strong, we have Staples, we have Paco's. Um, I'm wondering like if we put that facility at the center of the neighborhood, um, how about the other location? I mean, how the, how about the other spaces that haven't been developed yet? Uh, the DOH, probably they don't care about the business development, but I think the city of Linwood, they need to take care, I mean, they need to take this into consideration. Like, if we have such facility, would that prevent future, um, commercial development and business development? Um, that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, next up, we have Lisa Harrison. Uh, Lisa, if you're speaking, we're not able to hear you. Oh, look, there's.
Hi, are you hearing me? This is Jim Smith.
Oh, yes, sorry, Jim.
Okay, yeah, this is Jim. Lisa Harrison is our executive assistant at the City of Linwood, uh, for our city council. Again, my name is Jim Smith and I've just finished up 27 years on the Linwood City Council, so I'm not a newbie by any means. Uh, this is, this is extremely disturbing to me. Um, not just that, that the lack of transparency, but the idea that it's being snuck in here without the participation of, of the members of the Linwood City Council. We just heard about this, as you've heard a, a couple times, just a few days ago. It didn't seem that there was, we were not contacted to be doing this in the middle of the Christmas season is craziness. Uh, I'm, I'm a big believer in free markets, but this is, but not when the free markets are extremely detrimental to our community. We are, we have this coming to Linwood, if this is coming to Linwood, it's going to be a magnet for drug users. And I don't know, especially since we haven't been contacted, I don't know that this, uh, program even helps more than 10, 15, 20% of the drug addicts that are here or if it just becomes an augment. It augments their system so that they can, uh, and I'm not being judgmental here, but I don't know if it's augmenting their system of drug use or if it actually does help. Uh, I've got some real problems about that. And so, at this, at this point, I would hope that, you know, I'm also kind of, it would be very candid. I'm, I'm kind of disappointed in Representative Lauren Davis that she, that she didn't contact us if she knew about this going on. I'm very concerned that the mayor, the administration here in the City of Linwood didn't contact us. And it's not just, and I don't even know if the mayor knew, but heard, but the administration did. And so this whole thing should be put on hold, should be stopped. And, um, if nothing else, we delayed this for six months until we can get involved. How dare this organization come here to the City of Linwood and say, we don't care what you guys think. We're going to have this little, uh, we'll allow everybody to speak, but we've already made up our mind. I hope that's not the case. You have the opportunity to stop this, please stop this, delay this for six months and let's come to a solution together. Because just all of a sudden put this, uh, this facility in Linwood, especially where, you know, I don't, I don't expect it to be downtown Linwood, but I don't like the idea of it being in an area that's going to be problematic for people to be, for the law enforcement to be able to control people that are out of line. I'm not, I'm not happy with it being, again, a magnet to bring. I'm not, I'm not happy with it being, again, a magnet to bring these drug addicts to the City of Linwood. And I think that it's time that the responsible thing was done. I think it's time for us to be able to get this taken care of with our participation and our okay on it. I'm done.
Thank you. We have a second person under Lisa Harrison, so I'm assuming it's another council member. Well.
No, this is Lisa. I did not have my hand up. I apologize.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Next up is Bo Shonson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to speak. So in, in the beginning, I, I appreciate Daniel shared some statistics on how the math programs can help the people help, you know, on the overdose and help on the increase for the employment. But what we really love to see is how the data look like on the previous center location, the current location in Bothell. So that's, that's some, some data that we really want to see. Because like this program is not like very common to the most people. So we'd love to learn more about this program. We'd like to learn how this program is doing regarding the treatment for the patient and regarding like say, the crime rate or the, the unemployment rate for that location. So we'd love to see more data on that part. And also, just a note for the original website that has this information online. So that website right now is not able to be accessible. So like, is there a way for us to have some follow-ups, to have some knowledge on what's gonna happen next? And also because of the hearing, the selecting time, and people is complaining that this is not transparency. So if in the beginning for the hearing that this is not transparency, how can we have confidence that when the people, when the center has actually been built? And then how is, like, the execution for that center? How can we have confidence to know what actually happened to those centers? So that's really something that concerned me and I'd love to have more update, more transparency on the whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Chris Tang.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Chris. I'm running a digital health startup in Linwood. And I am one of those people who have vacation and, and I'm sorry, I'm late for this public hearing. So but I look at the, looking at the handouts, I, there is one pulling point about the need of the services. It says that over 100 CTC patients live within five miles of our new Linwood location. So my question is, do we have the assessment of the economical impact, the social impact and the health impact in this area? How many households in the, within five miles of this proposed location? How many parents are there? How many children there? So I think without thorough studies of those impacts, we'll not be able to vote for, what yes for this proposal. When it's kind of a lack of transparency. And also this public hearing is arranged during a time when people, most of people have vacation. I'm one of those people who almost missed this public hearing. I just want to voice out. Thank you.
Thank you. At the moment, I don't see any further hands raised. Oh, we got one more. Mario Lotmore?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
And Mario, we're showing that you're muted on your end, so you'll need to unmute yourself before we can hear you.
Oh, can you hear me now? Oh, there we go. All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry about that. Hi, I'm Mario Lotmore. I'm the editor of the Linwood Times. And I just wanted to mention that I know some people were saying that they were trying to access the website. Yes, the website did crash, so I had to reboot the website. So you may have to clear your cache or just restart your phone and then you could access the Linwood Times website. I was just going to share some, some information. So we've been just doing some research. And the city did issue a permit for this back in June. And, and then this, the, the drawings were approved in September of this year. I also went to the facility and took pictures. The facility is already built, all inside. It's all been approved inside. And on December 16th, I reached out to the city of Linwood to find out exactly what did they know? I've heard conflicting information when it came to the executive side of the equation. It seems as if the legislative side, the council was totally in the dark on this. The city cannot confirm who knew and what they knew. So I just, I just want to share that with, with readers. And we will be writing this story up tonight. The, so I guess my question here is who knew what, when, who know what and when? And because I just find it hard that it went through, I think, 16, 16 permit approvals within, because the permits were issued on October, even though they were, it was applied in June. And it went through three different inspectors and the drawings even have that it's a treatment facility. And it, it's just to defies logic even when you Google the name that no one knew what the facility was. So I just, I just want to know who knew what, when, if that would be great. If that, when, when was the earliest that someone at the city, and if you can say who that person was that they spoke with, knew that what was, what was coming in here just for, and I think that would aid in that question of transparency for a lot of residents. Thank you.
Muted. And then we have Duo G. We are showing that you're muted on your, oh, there we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity. I, I've heard a lot of questions. Most of my questions have been already asked and concerned have been raised. So I, I think right now it's very clear, this decision has been made in the dark, dare I say. And it was rushed through. I, I suspect there's strong intentions here. I won't speculate on why. I won't speculate on who did what and how. But clearly, the, the people, the residents and folks who work and live around here, around this area in the city do not like this, this decision. And there are a lot of, I don't doubt that there might be very few merits to this decision. But it's very clear that the, the concern and the limitations and short sighted on the decision maker side has been very transparent. So like many others, I do very much want to know exactly what would happen next. All of these concerns and these objections we've raised, does it even make sense? Is it like, would our concerns and objections be heard and be taken into consideration? Thank you.
Thank you. At the moment, I'm not showing any more hands, so I'm gonna go ahead and read a couple of comments that were submitted in writing by folks who were not able to raise their hand and speak aloud. But if you think of something and want to raise your hand, feel free to do so. I'll come back to the hands in just a minute. So one comment we received in writing, my name is Carolyn Judd Hertzfeld and I am a Linwood resident and licensed clinical social worker. I fully support having the treatment center being moved to Linwood. I encourage individuals with concerns about opioid treatment in general to go to the DOH website or SAMSA website to learn more about addiction in general. Please know that this facility will be welcoming clients to come every morning to receive medication that assists them in not going through severe withdrawals. A reminder about physical health and behavioral health parity. Substance abuse should be treated just like any other health issue. We also received a comment asking, echoing something that we've heard a lot, why move from Bothell to Linwood? The presentation provided the death data and the patient data related to the drug use in Linwood. I would also like to know the Bothell death data and patient data. Furthermore, would also like to know whether there are crime rate data before and after an OTP center is built in a neighborhood. And I believe the rest of the commenters were able to raise their hands and share their comments. Just checking one more time for any more hands. And I don't see any. So Michelle, I think it's back to you.
Great, great. Thank you, Cory. I also just wanted to throw out there too, if you were wanting to provide a comment and were unable to raise your hand, you could also indicate that in the questions box and we can call on you and unmute your line so you can speak. So I just wanted to give that opportunity to folks as well before we, before we move on. So Cory, I'd like to just give a couple of minutes to see if folks are wanting to type into the question box that they'd like to speak.
Sounds good. I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, we do have a new hand. Catherine Brand.
Hi, well, you called on me the very first because I raised my hand by accident. But after listening to everybody speak, I do have a few thoughts. First of all, I just saw the announcement for this public meeting. And I guess it was the Linwood Times. And I thought, wow, December 29th, that's pretty weird. But I thought, okay, just be a good citizen and come and see what all this is about. And I didn't know that it was behind the, that, you know, the Boys and Girls Club. I didn't know that. I think that's pretty stunning. And I also agree about, you know, why did they move from Bothell? And the other question, the thing I have is like, okay, who's going to answer these questions? Those of us who are asking them, how are we gonna find out? And, and again, like who is responsible for having made this decision? And the fact that it sounds like it's a done deal, that's kind of stunning. I, you know, I loved what Representative Davis had to say about, you know, we really, really need this treatment. But, you know, and then there's this NIMBY factor, you know, who is going to be, be ready to accept this in their own backyard? However, it does seem like right by the Boys and Girls Club isn't, isn't a great idea. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And I am not seeing any other hands at the moment. Oh, we got one more. Sophia Cowley. Sorry, I'm sure I mispronounced that.
That's okay. This is Sophia Kelly and her husband Timothy Lamy. We just want to throw our thoughts in. We have a house that is about two blocks down, just straight down from Boys and Girls Club. And we were found about this from Linwood Times not too long ago. We tried to spread the word around. And we find it very disconcerting that this was done on, like everybody said, short notice. Now, we all want people to get help. We all understand that it needs to go someplace. But I don't think a residential zone place is the best. I understand there's a medical building there already, but that's a family dentist. And I don't think that's, you know, I don't think that's one mentioned one time. In the building is a family dentist. Let's, let's be a little bit smarter about this. When we have these facilities, like when I worked down at the Drift On Inn, right across the street is one of these facilities. You start getting people lined up there for four or five hours. They get denied any services because they failed or something didn't go to schedule, they start getting very upset. It's not a very good place to put individuals that are upset right next to kids. Just our two cents.
Also, one more thing to add, if they are waiting there, some, if you're open early hours, how, there are gonna be people, or there may be people that decide to camp. There are some big streets right in front of the Alderwood Boys and Girls Club. They can just leave their trucks, leave their cars, start putting tents. What is the city gonna, like, what? What are we gonna do if they start setting up the, if they start camping there? Yeah, that's, that's our two cents. Thank you for listening.
Thank you both. And I do not see any more hands right now, so I'll turn it back over to you, Michelle.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to everyone who showed up this evening to give your comments. They are being recorded. And also just want you to know that this facility has not been licensed yet. It's not up and operating yet. And there are still some steps to go. And just also want to remind folks that the public comments, these are being used to identify concerns with the proposed agency or the services that the agency will provide. And so the agency can develop a plan to address and mitigate the concerns that you've brought up today. I'm gonna also put back up on the screen the contact information for the agency so that you can reach out to them directly. And give me just one second here, I can do that. There we go. And so you're more than welcome to reach out to the agency and, and with some of your questions, they also are going to be required to respond to these concerns within two weeks of this public hearing. And the department is going to be posting those on our website publicly for folks to be able to access. And so with that, I'm, I'm gonna check in with Julie tomorrow and see if she has any other, any other comments that she'd like to make about the public hearing before we pull things to a close. Julie?
I do not have any additional comments other than to just reiterate appreciation for those of you that, that came and spoke. And appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you, Julie. And Cory, I'm just gonna check in just one last time just to make sure that nobody has a hand raised or has typed anything into the comment box that they'd wanted to speak. I want to make sure everybody has a chance to say something if they need to.
No, there's no more hand raises and the only new stuff in the comments is some thank yous.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, again for showing up. I do want to recognize that it is the holiday season, so we appreciate your time. And, and want to say that for the record, this meeting is adjourned at 5:58 PM. Thank you.